Have you heard of Rhodes?
No.
Rhodes is from the town. Did you talk? Where was I?
In the math.
That tells you how much.
Not much either.
Exactly. That tells you how much.
No, no problem.
Good evening. We're going to call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for September ninth. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, if you will leave this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance is issued in flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kimberly, if you will please call the roll. Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the executive session memorandum from August twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the memorandum from the executive session. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the minutes from August twenty-sixth council meeting.
Moved approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the August twenty-sixth council meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
Moved approved the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. If anyone would like to say something, there are pieces of paper on the desk in the back. If you'll just fill it out and then hand it to the clerk's desk, we'll be happy to hear your comments. But since I see no one moving around, we will move on to council committee reports and our utilities committee and Mr. Dave, go right ahead.
Yes.
Jeff.
Thank you, Madam President. The Utilities Committee met for our third quarter meeting on Thursday, August twenty-eighth in the conference room at the wastewater utility office. Council members, Mike Davis, Evan Elliott, Darren Pedersen, myself were present along with members from the wastewater utility and the administration. Mr. Schrecker reviewed the 2025 second quarter financial reports of revenue and expenditures and stating that both revenue and expenditures were slightly favorable when compared with our 2025 forecast. Discussion continued with the current work being done at lift station two in that rehabilitation project there along Allisonville Road where off to the east. And he stated that certainly the work can continue through the winter, not like other construction projects. So that work is progressing. Mr. Schrecker also stated this was the first year the budget is being entered into open gov like the remainder of the departments in the city. And Mr. Magou stated that he hoped to have a draft 2026 budget to the wastewater committee at our next meeting in November. The, Mr. Magou stated that he was working with the legal department to draft an ordinance that provide for single homeowners the ability to connect to the city sanitary sewer and pay back those expenses over time. This is something that is allowed in the Barrett laws in the state. And Mr. Magou again added that there were some other features in the Barrett law ordinance that needed to be updated. Regarding stormwater work, discussion centered around the new development out in Wayne Township. And it was stated that the proposed utility ordinance would likely be required to allow the city to calculate storm sewer rates for those folks that are connected on a sanitary sewer, somewhat complicated sanitary sewer to the Hamilton Southeast and Fisher's Utilities. That division is made by township. All storm sewers, however, within the city limits are to be managed by the city's utility separate from the sanitary sewer. He added, and Mr. Davis certainly was aware of this, that some of the original storm sewers in the harbors were failing. Some had been made manufactured out of corrugated metal and that parts of the old town still use storm water in ditches rather than piping. And utility was evaluating some options to address those. Mr. Peterson then asked if the Senate Enrolled Act Number One was going to affect the utility department with the reduction of funds we're seeing from the state. And Mr. Magou stated that the utility department not being funded by property taxes would have only an indirect effect from Senate Bill One, especially as it regards to employees' salaries. They are going to be evaluated as other salaries within the city itself. And that was the end of our discussion. Work continues, excuse me. Work continues on the headworks project and the work on the solid solidification there at the plant itself. Work continues on. Any questions entertained?
Any questions, Mr. Johnson of the committee?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to Rhodes Committee. Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Rhodes Committee met on Friday, September fifth. Mr. Thurston and Ms. Wiles were both present and Mr. Schwartz and I both attended electronically. First off was to talk about Phase One Pleasant Street. It is complete except for just a little bit more landscaping. Then on Phase Two, then Tenth to Thirteenth, you may have noticed, has been reopened. And Nineteenth Street at the intersection of Pleasant was closed on September fourth, but it is back reopened also. For Phase Three, which is what is on most people's mind right now with the closure of State Road Thirty-two, the project is on schedule to open early in October. There is a chance it will open for State Road Thirty-two but not be able to go Hague or Pleasant for the first part. For a couple of weeks, you will probably not be able to go on Hague. It will just open up for Thirty-two straight traffic and then be able to move on Hague. And then at the end of the year is when the Pleasant Street Phase Three will totally open. For Bowden and One Hundred and Sixty-Sixth Street Roundabout, then appraisals are complete and offers are expected to be sent in early September. Little Chicago Road into the Caribbean Ra- uh Caribbean, Carrigan Road Roundabout, my father's least favorite potential roundabout in the city. The survey is complete and preliminary engineering is underway for that roundabout. For local projects, street rehabilitation, concrete work in West Haven and Lock Haven are both substantially complete. And also the paving on One Hundred and Sixty-first, One Hundred and Ninety-first and Cumberland Road and South Harbor are also substantially complete. And finally, the Embrace Downtown. I know many of us have had meetings on Embrace Downtown and want to make sure that everyone knows that the next public information meeting is scheduled for September twenty-ninth. So if you have any, want to hear about Embrace Downtown, it's going to be a great project, a big project. And we're going to have another public meeting on September twenty-ninth. So if you can attend that, that'd be wonderful. That's all I've got.
Any questions of Mr. Boyce and the Rhodes Committee? We will move on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met September fourth. Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, Todd Thurston and myself. Jess Balling gave us an update of the 2026 budget timeline revision. Tom McDonald gave us an update on the 2026 proposed budget overview. And Caitlin Kesner and Tom McDonald talked to us about a fiscal action needed appropriation transfer, implementation of new financial management software. That and the claims docket comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Davis of the Finance Committee?
Madam President.
Mr. Thurston.
Make a motion to approve the claims as presented. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Great. Miscellaneous item number one, council to receive a presentation from the Noblesville Youth Assistance Program, Lindsay Bennett. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm Lindsay Bennett. I am coming before you tonight as a Noblesville Youth Assistance Board Member and citizen of Noblesville. We do receive a grant from the City of Noblesville each year, which we are very appreciative of. And so we wanted to just come before you and kind of give you an update of what we've been doing this year and kind of what that grant money is going towards. So I appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. Just a quick introduction of our board members, our President Jeff Armstrong here tonight and our Vice President Dustin Dixon. Here. And then, as you can see, we have several community members who are very active and trying, and they're very active in helping us get some of these programs going and volunteer for the programs and they kind of keep them running. And then we have our ex-officio members, one of which Sarah Davis is with the City of Noblesville. And so she is an important link for us between us and the city. And we're very happy that she's on the board. And our advocates are also here tonight. We've got Brandy and Michelle. And everything I present to you tonight really is thanks to them. They are so important to this organization. And thanking up these programs and helping coordinate and get them going. And they really have this passion for this job and we are so thankful for both of them. So our tutoring program is probably our biggest program. If you recall, last year I was in front of you and we talked about using some of our money for tutoring for our third grade students in Noblesville schools to kind of get them ready for I read because, you know, the law changed, it's become a lot bigger issue and a lot more important to make sure that those students are passing that I read test. So for the 2024-25 school year, we had 247 students from East and West Middle Schools. And then last year, we had those third grade students join us for the first time. There were 199 tutoring sessions that were held during the school year and we had eighty-nine Noblesville school staff members who served as tutors. So we do try to get those staff members involved and those are primarily our tutors. But we do welcome others in the community, if anybody is interesting, interested in tutoring. So I think really the results speak for themselves. We had really good results with the third grade I read students. So seventy-four percent of the students who were in the after-school tutoring program passed I read three in the spring. Eighty-eight percent of those students who were not eligible to receive a retention exemption and were involved in the tutoring program passed in the spring. Then by the end of the year, we had eighty-six percent of the students who were involved that passed in the spring and the ninety-eight percent that were not eligible to receive that retention exemption. And I could not tell you what that retention exemption is, but I am really excited to see that ninety-eight percent. I feel like that is such a huge success and really speaks to the tutors and the tutoring program. We also have a mental health initiative, so we have been able to get some grants to cover some of the mental health and the resources that we need to connect those NYPD families with licensed mental health professionals. This was started in 2021 after seeing a need after COVID, you know, to support some of our program members as they're kind of coming out of the COVID era. So we also have partnered with Agapi Therapeutic Writing Resources and we had twenty-two Noblesville youth who participated this past year. And I don't know if you recall, but in 2024, we did receive some grant money from the mayor's RA that did help us fund some of those students or some of the youth to participate. The Parent Linkup Group is relatively new. It's something that, again, the advocates have put together. And it's a really great program that once a month, we have community members sign up and they can join. And it goes over just different topics each month. It could be anything from, what's kind of your hot topics that you see?
We've done some from legal resources to.
Yeah, so anything from like legal resources to financial planning. But we do have some more popular ones that you said Julie has been involved with.
Right. Well, yeah, we've invited the school to come back to school tonight. We've done, you said the financial, that we've done some parenting classes here recently, which is really cool. We're getting great feedback from that. We're looking at doing some just IA education or AI rather. I always flip that. But what's really neat about those is I'm getting tons of people who want to come and support our families and share and connect them to resources. So we really aren't duplicating the guest speakers that we have from last year to this year. And new this year, we started a second link-up group, which is happening in the mornings. It's connecting over coffee and it's more parent education focused.
Thank you. Awesome. We also still have our Noblesville Shining Star. This is probably one of our favorite programs board member wide. It is a program, again, that the advocates organize and put on for students that have kind of gone through maybe a growth period, maybe something difficult that they've overcome and maybe they're not the kind of student that are getting recognition at school. So each school nominates a student for the Shining Star program and then they come and they're honored and they get a dinner and they get a little goodie bag and just some recognition for kind of the growth that they've had over the year. And it is always a tearjerker. It is a definite favorite program of the entire board. Then holiday assistance, we provide holiday assistance to seventy-four youth. We've partnered with schools, other organizations and local businesses and just focused on the Noblesville community and the children here. We also do the Stuff Your Stocking. I always want to say Stock Your Stuffing. Stuff Your Stocking. The event is coordinating with downtown merchants and we sell stockings. And then whoever buys a stocking can go around to the different merchants and get like little trinkets and goodies. And it's just kind of a fun kickoff to the holiday season. It's usually the first Friday in December. And that is one of our kind of smaller fundraisers, but it is a lot of fun. And occasionally, we do get an appearance from The Grinch and hopefully we will get that again. And then the Career Exploration Camp is, again, something a little bit new. I think this is the second year that Brandy has put it on and it is really cool. It's more focused on kids who maybe aren't on the college path and are looking at other career opportunities within the community. So Brandy goes and finds all of these kind of different career paths and different companies that can provide maybe not just the college path and maybe a trade or public safety, something like that. And then they all come together and go through a week program to learn more about those career opportunities. And that is something that we partner with Fisher's on as well, so it is kind of a community-wide effort. And then, of course, Hay Bell Ball, that is our biggest fundraiser. It is November seventh this year at Mill Top. And of course, would love to see everybody there. It is a good time. It's very casual. It's Friday night. Bring your jeans, bring your boots, bring your cowboy hat. And it's dinner, drinks, dancing. We always have a great band and it's just kind of a lot of fun, silent auction. So, you know, would love to see everybody there this year. And then, of course, while we're here, wanted to kind of go over what we are spending some of the grant money on and some of the other money that we've received this year. Primarily, it does go towards tutoring. That is our biggest program right now. And then next would be our NYPD Cares Fund and that is basically kind of those miscellaneous things that come up throughout the year that we can help our families with. It could be anywhere from like a car repair to a pair of shoes. You know, just anything that can help these families succeed and feel like, you know, they're getting the resources that they need. We also have ninety-two hundred for mental health. We have our Shining Star program, Career Camp, Linkup, and then the Holiday Assistance. So we are so appreciative of the grants that we receive from Noblesville and we are putting it to good use for our Noblesville community. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Any questions?
I have one. What's the biggest unfunded gap that you guys have? Like if there was something else that you see as a gap or a gap that's coming?
The advocates would probably be the best to speak on this as they live and breathe this every day.
And Michelle, if you'll introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm Michelle Schmidt. Nice to see you all. Excuse me. A couple of our things will probably won't surprise you. It's housing and it's transportation. Those are some of our biggest barriers. And unfunded. Yeah. I will also add, I want to point something else out for the numbers on the screen. There's the Yap Cares and Holiday Assistance, those are our like casework side. The rest of the dollars are going into the community. So because it's tutoring or link-up, Shining Star, Career Camp, they don't, they're not necessarily part of our casework, our social work side. So I just think it's really important to highlight that, that we are giving and providing a lot more than just, just that, that side. And we don't limit our programming and what we do to the families that we support internally like that. Added more to, did I answer?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any more?
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Great work.
Yeah, great work. Great. We will move on to proposed development presentations. Council to hear introductory information on the East and West Gateway Master Plans. Denise Ashelman. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm going to try very hard not to get these messed up, but I'm not guaranteeing anything. So many of you know that over the last year and a few months, we have been working on our East and West Gateway plans. They're gateways to downtown, not necessarily gateways to our community. I'll start with that. So the East area was spurred on a little by our acquisition of the Firestone property as well as the Pleasant Street project. As many things we've done recently have been spurred on by. And then we also included some of our organizations that provide a lot to our community. Ivy Tech, Boys and Girls Club, the libraries adjacent. So this straddles both sides of Connor Street, essentially from Eighteenth Street to Thirty-seven. And then encapsulates a lot of the non-residential area south of Connor Street going down to Pleasant. The West Gateway is more of the area on the west side of the White River. Also includes a lot of anchor institutions, including Riverview Hospital, Noblesville Schools and a number of our businesses. This area actually received a plan back in the olden days, known as the early two thousands, that did result in the Federal Hill zoning district being created. The, and that plan has spurred a lot of growth there. But a lot of those anchor institutions are also looking to expand in the area, so we're taking a second look at that. So each of these plans looked at four big ideas upon which we can build. The East Gateway is more about making sure we're presenting a face to State Road Thirty-seven that makes people want to come visit while still maintaining our historic character. Because most of this area is an existing residential neighborhood that's very well established. But there are also areas of it that are cut off from State Road Thirty-seven. The grid does not go through, so it's looking at being a beacon on State Road Thirty-seven but also creating a more pedestrian-friendly area while also integrating green spaces. Because this is one area of town that does not have a lot of trails or parks or any of those things. So finding ways to integrate those as we continue to redevelop. And then this is just one of the nice, pretty renderings that was derived to try to convey what this could look like. So this would be State Road Thirty-seven. This is Pleasant Street. One of the big ideas is as we start to continue to do redevelopment along State Road Thirty-seven would be to create a central green that is essentially a one-way street in each direction with a green space in the middle to connect Pleasant Street and Connor Street.
Quick question, just to set the table for someone that isn't familiar with East and West Gateway. These are not proposed projects. This is just setting a vision for if development would come to the community.
My easiest way to explain this plan document is it is like a choose-your-own-adventure book. If you decide that you want to come and redevelop it or develop a piece of property within these project boundaries. within these project boundaries. We set out a vision for what we would like to see potential future land uses and street networks and those types of things look like and also different building typologies and what those would look like. And then we put those all together, but nothing in here is intended to say, because there are, there are what they call catalytic sites selected within these plans, which are essentially the parcels that we believe are most likely to redevelop soon as we believe they're reaching the end of their productive life. And it's just setting out what we want to see going forward. We're not saying we're coming to purchase your property tomorrow. It's just setting out that vision when we do have people approach us with those ideas. So did anyone have any specific questions on East Gateway? Which I do want to point out, one of the big things with this plan is what we are going to do with the Firestone properties that we received, including the old slab from the old factory, along with the parking lots on the north side of Division Street. This plan envisions that area kind of as a civic hub, so looking for land uses that add value to our community and could include, we know will include the police station, new police station, but also could include things like the senior center or maker spaces or a community center, those types of things. And I also want to point out, anyone on Economic Development Committee will get a more extensive presentation in the morning on this as well. The West Gateway also focuses on pedestrian connectivity, but a big focus within this area is the White River. One of the things we've done as we've developed over the last 200 years is some of our development activities have turned their back on the river. They've not embraced it as an amenity. That trend has continued to change, so it's making sure that we bring the White River into the site planning when doing this so that uses do 360-degree architecture, include pedestrian accesses. And this also recommends a additional pedestrian crossing south of Connor Street over the White River that would connect into the Riverview Campus. And this is the rendering. This is East Bank, Connor Street, Logan Street. And you can see, West Gateway does have a few challenges because there is flood plain for the White River that does encompass some of the property in there. So the full plan text was attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting. We will be taking this plan to these plans to Plan Commission for the September 15th meeting for the Plan Commission to make a recommendation to this body for adoption.
Other questions or comments?
Denise, just so you know, I met with Sarah this afternoon. We talked a lot about the West Gateway and a few different things. I had one constituent that wrote me and had some thoughts on it, so I will email those to you.
I have a feeling I might know who that was.
Possibly, possibly. He had some good ones, so.
Quick question on that point. There was some public outreach, I remember seeing some at the farmer's market.
Yeah, so we did, I believe four pop-ups at the farmer's market. Honestly, this plan process taught us that that's actually the best way to get public input. People are not as inclined to come to standalone events, especially because we do them on evenings and weekends and people would rather go do other things. But they are very inclined to stop at our tents at the farmer's market. And in fact, we got double the input just in two four-hour sessions at the farmer's market than we did on an online survey that was up for two months and got pushed out on social media multiple times. So that also helped us garner our, part of our public outreach for our comp planning UDO process we're about to start.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll see you when you come back after the plane.
I do want to make a quick statement on the next intro. Normally, I know Steph does not normally talk. So we are actually negotiating with the property owner for this next introduction, 11460 Greenfield Avenue, to purchase a portion, about four acres of the property for a proposed new fire station. I believe they have it in their presentation as well, but Matt Light and Chief Mitchell have been spearheading that process.
So we will move on to the next item, which is Council to hear an introductory information on a text amendment to the adopted plan development ordinance for Fiori Nursery at 11460 Greenfield Avenue to allow for the operation of an excavating business. Mr. Dabashawitz. Says on my agenda, Schinnever, so I was like, oh.
We're gonna fix that. Good evening and for the record, my name is John Dabashawitz. I'm a land use professional with the law firm Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. With me here this evening is Roscoe Dorsey. Roscoe is the owner of Legacy 414 LLC and the operator of Dorsey Excavating. Jim Schinner, attorney with our office, is also present this evening. The site that Denise just mentioned is located north of and adjacent to Greenfield Avenue to the west of Summer Road and south of, but not adjacent to 156th Street. It was in front of the council a couple of years back for the operation of a landscaping and contracting business for landscape materials on that site that was short-lived. Roscoe has since acquired the property. It's approximately 15 acres in size and it's outlined in yellow on the exhibit that you see on display now. We did forward out information to the council and we amended one of the exhibits here to be a little clearer to read. The engineering plan was very small and I want to walk through this with you real quickly. Is there a good way to, I don't know if we've got the, no, it's hard to see, but I'll describe it in colors. The site today has an existing building which is occupied there, shown, outlined in the middle of the site. To the north and east of that is a, is a blue box line. That blue box line represents where there would be a chain link fence. It's adjacent to Hood Gardens, isn't visible from 151st or rather 56th or Greenfield Avenue. Along the northwest and south perimeter of that area, it's outlined in red, that would be represented by the mound and wall that you see there. So interior to the site, there'd be a 12-foot wall. It would be built by two-by-two-by-six concrete prefab forms, so there would be a storage and vehicles and materials in that space, which would have a 12-foot screen around it. On the outside of it, it isn't a 12-foot wall. It would be depicted as a mound and then that mound comes up to eight feet in height with a four-foot extension over the top of it, so there would be landscaping and lawn on the outside of that mound, but on the inside it would appear as though a concrete wall. The area identified in green would be additional, an additional mound area and then the green squares that go along the south edge of the building, excuse me, actually the north edge of the building, but projecting from the south, that area would be represented by the shadow box fence. So if you're driving along Greenfield or 156th Street, you won't see any of the materials stored in that space to 12 feet in height. That would include mulch, topsoil. There's an existing pile of topsoil out there today that will get incorporated into the production of the mound that I just described. And then all vehicles and transactions regarding the drop-off of our delivery of materials and our vehicles would take place in that screened-in area. Like I said today, the existing business had a lot of landscape materials, including mulch and topsoil. Roscoe's business is excavating. They do site work for construction of subdivisions and other things, so most of the equipment, with the exception of when it is maintained, is located off-site on those individual work sites. And if it's, as Roscoe described it, if they're located on-site, they're not getting paid. So we like keeping them off, on-site for work sites. There's a future building identified there. That's a plan that's maybe a few years out, but Roscoe, in transparency, wanted to identify it for everybody to show them, here's my, my future plan for this, for this site. With that, I'll conclude. Be glad to address any additional questions the commission may have. We're, we're on schedule for a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission that'll be next Tuesday, the 15th, and then we'll be back to the council after that for adoption consideration. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. John, excuse me. You're envisioning access from Greenfield?
Exclusively. And, and I apologize because I had one other exhibit. This helps show you the location. Again, the area outlined in yellow is the overall 15 acres. The green area is Roscoe's planned business and then the four acres that Denise noted that's in discussions with Matt Light and the city about the potential for a fire station is that four acres that's outlined in, in orange. There'd still be a one driveway access out onto 38, or Greenfield rather, as planned today, as shown on the existing plan.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just one note for the record. John got the date right, but the day wrong. It's Monday, the 15th. So he said Tuesday, 15th. Be there Monday, John, just for the record.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. Move on to Council to hear an introductory information concerning a proposed development on 99 acres at the southeast intersection of Prairie Baptist Road and 156th Street to be known as Encore at Linden Walk. Mr. Schinnever, Mr. Dabashawitz. Mr. Dabashawitz.
I have a doubleheader today. Thank you, Council, again for the record. John Dabashawitz with Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We are representing David Weekly Homes, present tonight on behalf of David Weekly, or Ed Freeman and Lindsay Phipps, Jim Schinnever, an attorney with our office, is also present this evening. This information is regarding the Encore at Linden Walk. One might ask, what is Encore? Encore is David Weekly's 55-plus community brand, which will be new to the Indianapolis market, so there's no other location in Indianapolis today. There's some in the southeast as well as east in different neighborhoods that I believe we forwarded on information on those different communities to council members in the last few weeks. These Encore neighborhoods highlight recreational and social amenities. Linden Walk, as proposed this evening, will include a clubhouse, pool, fitness, sports courts, both tennis and pickleball and bocce, et cetera, and walking paths for residents, which is one of the primary components within the design. Homes will feature master downliving and lifestyle-driven home design, typically incorporating universal design. Universal design is in addition to those things like few steps and wide doorways. There's hangar locations and bathrooms and other areas that help those of us who I'm almost a member of in a few months. Maintenance of landscaping grounds and amenities is also included, so you maintain your home. All the outside work, including lawn mowing and landscape maintenance, is done by the HOA, so it makes it a little more free time for folks. This is a overall of the east side of the community. Of course, the council's familiar with the Gatewood Lakes development. It's identified there in yellow. We're surrounded, as you can see there, by recent annexation to the north, west and south by those areas that are components within Gatewood Lakes. The site is outlined in red. It's approximately 99 acres in size and it's located at the southeast intersection of 156th Street and Prairie Baptist Road. This is just a bit of a zoom-in. The top left corner is that offset intersection of 156th and Prairie Baptist. One might ask, what's the consideration regarding that intersection? Our understanding is that the city has let design of that intersection out for the potential of a roundabout, which will eliminate the offset and handle traffic both along 156th and Prairie Baptist, of which we have access to both. This is a site layout. The plan incorporates 210 lots along curvilinear street design. You can see access to the north along 156, which lines up with that black and white line work as one of the subdivision components of the Gatewood development. And then to our west along Prairie Baptist is the second point of entry into the development. There's a bit of a unique aspect here. There's two different lot designs and you can see those in the yellow and, and orange. Those are not home footprints, those are pad footprints, so they're a little bit bigger. Those wouldn't be the size of necessarily the homes, but just an area that's prepared for housing construction on those lots. Typically in a situation like this, builders have done a pod or a grouping of one-size-lot and then work over to the other side of the development, do a pod, a reworking. This mixture of lots is going to be required within the ordinance and it provides for more, more variety so that you'll get more distinctive views of those homes and aesthetics. We'll go over the homes in just a minute. Walking paths, we'll prepare another exhibit that really punches these up. You can see that the red line work through the site, there's over a mile of internal paths. That's in addition to the multi-use paths along 151st, rather 60, 156th Street and Prairie Baptist. And there's just over eight acres. You can see that area that's highlighted in the brighter green color. Those are existing woods on the site and there'll be eight acres of preserved woods. A central amenity area that's right at the intersection of the two entry points. If I can see if I can get that identified right there to the screen, to numbers, right, my left. And there's an enhanced common area landscaping that'll provided throughout the community as well as enhanced architecture. So as of late, and David Weekly's agreed to this, all homes will have masonry components on all four sides of the dwellings. We won't be going back and looking for what's the most visible from perimeter streets or corner locks or things like that. It'll be masonry on all four sides of all homes incorporated into the architectural design, of which you can see here. The four images on the left-hand side of the screen are computer-generated by the architect. The two images, the taller ones, on the right-hand side are actually photographs of the existing homes that are constructed in their eastern US markets. What you don't see here is the masonry component on all four sides. There will be masonry on all four sides. Some of the other things you might miss in these, it may not pick up overhangs and overhangs something that we'll go to ARB with and review and provide in accordance with the architectural standards that Noblesville has in place. Square footages will range from, range from 1,500 to 3,000 square feet. There's one change there. We included in our ordinance an 1,800-foot dimension. All the home plans that we're going to present to ARB include 1,800 square feet. David Weekly will like the ability in their ordinance to reduce that to as small as 1,500 square feet in the event that they find in the marketplace a demand for smaller housing for couples who fit that category. As I indicated, masonry will be a standard provided on all homes and there's 25 distinct home elevations provided, which will make up that variety across those two lot sizes. Anticipated price points will be between the mid-400s and mid-500s. Amenities are one of the central components to this plan. You see some imagery here. The plan will include a centrally amenity area that'll have an internal clubhouse. It won't just be a bath house with changing rooms and storage. This is a facility that'll accommodate inside gatherings as well as activities. Some of the sport courts and outdoor furnishings are identified here. Another thing is that there won't just be a component where it has the main amenity facility, there'll be other gathering spaces. This represents the trail network to the top left-hand side of the screen. There's community garden space as well as other gathering areas that are identified here in this imagery. These additional elements will be codified in the ordinance and required to be constructed within the site. That'll conclude things. We have met with several council members. Would be glad to meet with others before we get in front of the Plan Commission. This matter will not be on Plan Commission meeting next Monday. It will be held in October. I don't have the date on the top of my mind, but we'll also have a neighborhood meeting for this matter within about 10 days, plus or minus in advance of that Plan Commission meeting. But again, not until October, so we have time, if the rest of the council members are interested, to sit down and review or address questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Voits?
Mr. Dabashawitz, a quick question. Does this have anything in there that does legally bind 55 or older to it?
The ordinance does not. If the council would require it, we would submit that via commitment.
Okay.
And that wouldn't be a problem.
I would prefer that. We have had, I was just told that this last week, we had one that came in and told us they were going to be 55 and older. They marketed as such and that now they are not holding to what they said. And so, I, I don't know about the rest of the council. I won't speak for them, but for me, then, I think that's something that we need going forward if we can come up with a way to do it legally and...
Understood. We've, we've got a pattern for that and we'll, we'll submit it before we go to Plan Commission in the form of a commitment.
Perfect. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
So, it's age target, not age restricted?
It is age restricted, 55 and older, ID. So, it'll be HOPA compliant. And before we get to Plan Commission, I'll go ahead and push out to council members, draft of what we're looking at providing. So, and, and also to legal counsel so they can confirm that it does what you're asking.
Perfect. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I like the, I, I think this is one of the most unique site plans that we've had a long time and I appreciate you took advantage of the topography. And I, I think it's great. I, I also really like that when you have a community that's all the same demographic, you've mixed the, you've mixed the lot sizes, sprinkled them together. I always wonder why more people don't do that. I think that's great. I would like some consistency where the front door is so you do build a sense of community, so we don't have big houses and little houses kind of moving in and out. But if there's some kind of like minimum or maximum from the front, from the street, just to get a kind of an urban community feeling, that'd be great. I really like this site plan.
Mr. Johnson?
Only other comment, sir. We have requested of other developers rental restrictions and things of that nature. I assume you'd be prepared to do something like that.
We'll have our client review that and I'll know the answer to that question, which will likely be yes. And I'll include it within the commitments for the HOPA restriction.
Understand. If we have, in this demographic, if we have snowbirds or whatnot that are, just, we want to be aware of who's, as Mr. Voits said, who's, you know, who's going to be making use of this, this nice new community.
Understood.
Mr. Thurston?
If I wanted to look at a similar development around here, is there?
There, there is, there is not. Am I, I, I recall that we sent out a, an email with direction on links to different communities. But I think what you're asking is, if we can direct you to other David Weekly communities to give you an idea of the character and quality of construction, we can do that.
I like to kick the tires a little bit, opposed to just looking at paper.
I'll get you addresses, they may take the drive. Maybe about 16.
I'll circle back with you and we'll, like to, I'd like to go out and take a look at a few.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
On Exhibit C and the architectural standards, are those our architectural standards that you're committing to? Are those, do those include waivers that you'll be seeking?
It includes adjustments.
But in that, that's still, that's what you'll be asking the ARB for?
Correct.
Okay. I would, I know this is a little bit more intricate for, than this setting, but I would like to see a stronger commitment to front porches. I, it's something I've been working on this year and I think that in a community like this that has a specific demographic, I love the community space that's sprinkled throughout and I would love for there to be more opportunities for people to build that community in the front yard.
I'm going to circle back with you and we're going to drill down on what that, how that gets imported into the ordinance.
Thanks.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, I think the vibrant plan probably lends itself more to the front porches, for sure. I think a few of the Harwin plans, especially on the, the second page of the Harwin Continued Plans, those, those are predominantly siding. I know that a lot of the shrubbery in, in a few of these elevations just tend to hide a lot of that brick or stone on the front. So, while I admire the use of that product, perhaps a little more coverage in, in the future would be nice. But I do like the amount of green space in the, the community. I, I think the, the land is used pretty well in this project. My last comment would be, you mentioned kind of mid-fours and the mid-fives, is that correct? Okay. You know, just from a market research standpoint, looking at that in relation to, let's say, the new Del Webb community, where they're kind of starting in the mid-threes. Perhaps a little market research on why this product would potentially succeed in the market alongside that, that product would be admirable. So, that's my only comment. I, I think you guys have done a nice job.
And we'll drill down on the masonry percentages. What you don't see here, Mr. Elliott, some of these homes don't show that masonry that we're committing to as part of the ARB process.
Sure.
These are, again, from another, the colored images are from another market and, and don't meet those specific architectural standards that we've committed to in the ordinance.
Understood.
Anyone else?
Madam President, just for the record, that Plan Commission meeting will be October 27th. Anyone who's interested and attending.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is a transfer, counsel to consider transfer TA-04-25, an appropriation transfer in the general fund for financial assistance system modernization. Mr. McDonald?
Madam President, members of the council, I'm Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. And the request before you is to begin the replacement of the city's financial management systems. So, just a little bit background, the city uses legacy applications for our accounting, asset management, payroll and utility billing systems. So, these systems rely on outdated technology and they have not been upgraded since the city began using them since the early 2000s. The technology, though, itself is a little bit older than that. If you've ever used a green screen, that has a really similar look and feel for the systems that we work in. And, yeah, this setup leads to a number of suboptimal processes that we experience on a day-to-day basis. A really easy example is that our finance and accounting staff go through a lot of duplicate data entry. Systems are not well-integrated with each other or with other systems that the city uses. And then, another example is that they're, they're housed on the city's file servers, so they're not, they're not cloud-based. So, when there's an issue, system goes down, our IT department has to individually, first, I guess, every user has to exit the system, then our IT department has to individually go onto a user system to fix it. So, there are suboptimal issues on both for the front-end user and also on the back end. The reason that we're coming to you tonight to request this isn't just for those issues, but we've been presented with an opportunity for system replacement because the company that owns these, these systems, it's called Voys, was recently acquired by a different company called BSNA Software. It's a company out of Michigan and they specialize in a cloud-based financial system that is exclusively designed for local government. So, because of the clients that they've now inherited and they're branching out in Indiana, they've created a version of their software with Indiana in mind. So, we're, the, they're in a position to do a much easier system replacement and a more cost-effective one than we would have otherwise experienced. In terms of budget impact, so the, the action tonight is for an appropriation transfer of $78,000 from the city's contingency fund. And then, in 2026, there are some one-time costs that are included in our requested budget for, for system training and because we'll have to run some of the existing legacy software concurrently while we're standing up the new system. So, those are one-time costs of 2026. In 2027 and beyond, we are estimating savings of around $100,000 annually because these current systems cost more than the software licensing agreement that the new system would cost. So, I'll stop there and open up to questions.
Questions, comments?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve transfer TA-04-25 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-04-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine-zero. Thank you very much. We are on to council comments. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.